Now I'm calling to order the town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting dated Wednesday, September 13th, 2017 is now in order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. And Mr. Paulson, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
And Vice Chair Kane? Here. I'd ask everyone stand and join Commissioner Badami in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paulson, do we have any written communications tonight?
We do. Mr. Mullen will address those when we come forward to item two, but there is an addendum and a desk item for item number two this evening.
Has everyone had time to look over the desk item on your computer or sometime tonight? Yes. We have no requested continuances, so I'll go to subcommittee reports. In addition to the service of the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on several town committees other than this one. Do we have any reports this evening from historic or anyone else? Yes, Commissioner?
The General Plan Committee met earlier today and we reviewed an item at 202 University. The applicant wanted to change their general plan designation from Office Professional to Medium Density Residential, and it had in the past been residential for many, many years. So we recommended approval of the amendment, and then that will come with probably an architecture insider and its own change to the Planning Commission and then the Town Council.
Thank you. Any other committees? We move on to the verbal communications portion of the meeting and public participation. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's good to see such a lively turnout. The town encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of Los Gatos. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberation of the Planning Commission. Written comments about agenda items submitted to staff prior to the meeting are always welcome and helpful. At the meeting of the Commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to further participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And then later on, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing on an item on agenda when it's called in turn. If you wish to address the Commission tonight during the verbal communication period or doing the consideration of an item on the agenda, please complete a speaker card, such as this, which is located in slots in front of wherever you're seating except for the first row, there on the back of the benches. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly. I never specialized in exciting handwriting. I don't know, but I gotta read them and I want to try not to read them wrong. For anyone who tends to speak this evening, I'd ask when you come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is situated such that you speak right into it. And keep in mind, there's a three-minute time limit for your presentation. And when there's 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on. That means you have 30 seconds left. It doesn't mean stop. Some people misunderstand that. Then 30 seconds later, the red light will come on and then you stop. So it's amber and then it's red. We'll turn now to... Oh, so I want to make sure you've had an opportunity to turn your cards in. Everyone who's going to speak has done that? Alright, good. Thank you. We move on to the consent calendar. Tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar. Any member of the Planning Commission or any member of the public may request that an item be removed from consent. And the one item that we have tonight is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, August 23rd, of the Planning Commission. Any comments regarding that? Any wishes to... Commissioner Badami?
I'll make a motion.
Please do.
And that would be... I move to approve the approval of the minutes on the consent item. And that would be the minutes from August 23rd of 2017.
Is there a second?
I second.
Just all at once. Let's vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Vice Chair, can you confirm who seconded that?
I'll go with Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you.
We move on now to the public hearing portion of our agenda and consider the items on the agenda. Tonight, we have one item. It is Agenda Item Two. And that is, considering this is Town Code Amendment A 17002, Consider Amendments to Chapter 29, Zoning Regulations of the Town Code Regarding Fences, Hedges, and Walls, and Includes New Regulations and Requirements for Fences, Hedges, and Walls in the Hillside Area. Mr. Mullen, will you give us a staff report tonight?
Excuse me, Vice Chair Kane. Prior to Mr. Mullen giving a report, I believe Commissioner Hudes has something he'd like to say.
The second time we've done that.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you.
Surprise us.
Commissioner Hudes. I will be recusing myself from this item in that I own a property in a hillside area, and I believe that the way the recommendation is currently drafted, it would cause an economic impact, and I would prefer not to participate in this matter.
I'm looking for the notes that were provided verbatim in the last meeting regarding such a recusal. Mr. Paulson or Ms. Lampers, do you think we need to review the technicalities of this recusal?
We do not. Mr. Hudes has stated a perfectly reasonable reason for why he's recusing himself, and we should let him do so.
And the town attorney, Mr. Schultz, gave us long chapter and verse, if anybody wants to refer back to that from the first meeting, as to why this is an appropriate move. And I don't see what you're gonna... Why don't you go home? We only have one item.
Thank you. I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Alright. Commissioner Hanson?
I would prefer if we could restate for the public why it is that people that live in the hillsides that are sitting on the Planning Commission are able to participate in the hearing if they choose not to recuse themselves.
If you don't mind, I can read what he said. I give it to you. The guidance we received last time from the town attorney, and I'm quoting him from the transcript. "Let me make sure for the public that they understand the law in this area. The Fair Political Practices Act is very complicated and often revised law. And what it does say, it has certain conflict of interest involving your real property and your business assets. In this case, there could very well be a presumption that there could be an economic effect on your property, and therefore usually that would require a stepping down and not a hearing in the matter." But there's also known, there's also a provision called the General Public Exception. And what that says is, if you are a public official and you're hearing an item that might affect your property and the value of it, but you're in the same position as a significant portion of the community, and you're going to be similarly affected as everyone else, then you are able to hear it. This means there's no conflict of interest under state law, but that being said, there's still the perception. And I think that's what Commissioner Hudes was talking about. Even though there might not be a conflict of interest under law, there could be a perception, and he doesn't feel comfortable about that. But there's no violation of the law if he was to stay and hear it, but however, that's why it's okay for him to step down when he doesn't feel comfortable hearing the case. Counselor, is that essentially correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
Commissioner Janoff?
And just to clarify, I also reside on a hillside property and choose to participate in the discussion tonight.
Commissioner Hanson?
And like Commissioner Janoff, I also reside in a hillside residential zone, and I've chosen to participate in this hearing.
Anyone else? Commissioner Badami, do you want to join us?
Sure. I don't live in the hillside, but I choose to participate tonight. I hope that's okay.
Why don't you come on down if you want, or not? That's okay. So, back to Mr. Mullen. You have a staff report for us, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is continued consideration of amendments to Chapter 29 of the Town Code Regarding Fences, Hedges, and Walls. To back up to why we're here, in January of 2017, the Town Council held a study session to identify strategic priorities for the fiscal year 2017 through 2019. Dave Weissman requested that an ordinance amendment regarding fences in the hillside areas of the town be set as a strategic priority, and at that study session, four council members identified hillside fences as a strategic priority and directed staff to study the issue and bring it back through the process. This item came before the Commission on July 26th, where it was introduced and public comment was received. The Commission continued the item and provided staff with direction to address questions and requests by some Commissioners. Staff's response to these requests are included on pages one and two of the staff report. The staff report also includes a refined working draft of the draft ordinance as Exhibit Eight and includes revisions and refinements marked in red and underlined text. An addendum and desk item have been provided, which include verbatim minutes from the previous meeting and additional public comment received by staff after the publishing of the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the draft ordinance, discuss the topics of concern raised by staff, and forward the draft ordinance with any comments or recommended changes to the Town Council with a recommendation for adoption. This concludes staff's presentation of the staff report, and we are here to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing and begin calling up speakers. We have quite a number of speakers, so I'll call you up like three at a time. And Speakers Two and Three, please take a seat near the microphone so you're ready to go when the other speaker's done. Again, you'll have three minutes to address us. The yellow light does not mean stop. It means you have 30 seconds left. I'm calling Albert Kurkshibashi. How close? It works for you.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm calling three people. I got tongue tied. Dick Clift and Jim Vergata. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Albert Kurkshibashi. I'm the property owner of 165 Happy Acres Road in Los Gatos. I live in the hills. When fencing can be demonstrated to impact the movement of animals on a specific site, we can apply specific rules and work with the town rather than establishing or imposing guidelines that impact everyone in the hillside. We do have a one and a half acre vineyard. When we applied for the conditional use permit, we worked with the town, with the neighbors, to come up with a fencing solution that would protect the plants, the vines, allowed for movement of wildlife, and made it aesthetics looking. So on the southern side and the western side, we erected deer fencing. We used the topology of the land as well as the plantation to minimize the visual impact. On the northern side, we provided a corridor for wildlife as requested by the neighbors. So we have movement of wildlife surrounding the properties completely. On the northern side, sorry, on the eastern side, we put up a split rail fence with a neighbor in order to kind of have an open look. We modified that split rail fence to include netting. The netting is almost invisible. So by working with the town and our neighbors, we came up with a solution that both minimized the visual impact, allowed wildlife passage, provided protection to the vines. So I think the existing guidelines are sufficient, and it's probably best that we address fencing on a case-by-case basis. So just arbitrary rules are not necessarily good because they may have some aesthetic, let's say, if I had to build a fence around a certain perimeter, it would have been visible to the neighbors. So that's something to think about. Every situation is different. Thank you.
Let's see if there's any questions. Questions for the Speaker. Commissioner Janoff?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you. Could you tell me how tall your deer fence is?
It's seven feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me make sure I understand. These fences are up already, right?
They're up already.
And that implies they're in compliance with the code?
Yeah, we applied for a conditional use permit at that time, and we worked with the town as well as our neighbors.
And the netting you mentioned, that's also in compliance?
Probably not, I would imagine. I mean, we indicated fencing, deer fencing all around, but then we put the netting up on the one side.
Thank you. Jim? Jim Vergata?
Good evening. My name is Jim Vergata, and I live at 15310 Souview Drive along with my wife and my two small daughters. When I decided to buy this, my property a couple years ago, was because, you know, we love the setting, which has trees, wildlife, vegetation that usually comes along with hillside property. While it's enjoyable to see the deer and the wildlife, as a property owner, I don't feel that we should be dictated on how we can or should protect our property while considering biodiversity. It appears to me that when, that the property size was not even taken into consideration when this ordinance was put into place. In my case, I have 2.5 acres and I'm being treated, my fencing, the 30 feet are just the same as if somebody has a 25,000 square foot lot. That's part of the reason why I bought a bigger piece of property, so I could have more access and enjoy my property a little more. But in this case, it isolate, by this 30-foot limitation, it isolates my kids' playground and structure/picnic area that we've created for them to play with. With this ordinance, our children will be exposed to, you know, coyotes, mountain lions, bobcats, deer, and different wildlife, because my playground is about 110 feet away from my residence. Okay? If forced to adhere to this proposed ordinance, this would severely limit the use of our property and adversely impact property values. The larger the property, the more severe the financial impact may be. Deer also have caused a lot of damage on our expensive landscaping, planning, and as property owners, we should have the right to protect our investments. I ask the Commission to reconsider other solutions such as property owners providing a corridor or some type of pathway between the properties, however large that may be, according to some appropriate studies. That's basically my...
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Birch?
Do you have fencing currently around the children's play area?
No, but I was about to put one in.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Because of that problem. I just moved there not too long ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, you said Sobie Drive. Yes?
Souview Drive.
Souview Drive. Thank you. Dick Clift, followed by Julie Donnelly, Peter Donnelly, and Vadim Kerland. Mr. Cliff?
Yes, my name is Dick Clift. I live at 17670 Torney Road in Los Gatos. I just wanted to speak to the hillside concept here. These rules are pretty restrictive. I think most people are entitled to a reasonable use of their property, and these rules, I'm only going to speak to a couple of things on them, but they just seem generally over-restrictive. One thing that seems to be a concern is the migration of animals back and forth between properties. I think rather than this 30 feet, a better solution to consider would be that if everybody put their fence five to 10 feet back from their property line, then that would leave somewhere between a 10 and 20-foot corridor around all of the properties. And I know it doesn't meet your guidelines, excuse me, as far as small animals, but small animals get around. They either go over the fence or under the fence, or they always find a way to get there. But that way, people would still be able to maintain their property with nice landscaping and keep the deer out in the deer, and some of the larger animals could move along very easily. A 42-inch fence is a pretty small fence, and for hillside development, that doesn't really do much. The five-foot or the six-foot standard of fencing that's been used for many, many years all over the country has been a good one. It's not abusive. And the other thing was that the, your comments in here about not wanting a chain link fence, for the hillside, it's probably the best fence you can put up. First of all, it's durable, and if you put in a black chain link fence with black fabric, you don't even notice it's there, especially when it's up against background of trees and that sort of stuff. So it's the least offensive fence that you can put up, yet it's not allowed according to these conditions. So I think that's about all I have to say, but too many things to talk about. And the same with hedges. People shouldn't be restricted to that low of a hedge. I mean, if somebody wants some privacy at their home, I can't see any reason why a six-foot hedge wouldn't be a problem. And so that's all I have to say. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Cliff? Commissioner Hanson?
I was just curious, do you currently have a fence on your property?
Yes, my property's all fenced in, so I would fall under the portion that nothing new, but you know, you also have regulations. If you have to take the fence down, then you gotta do these certain things too. So it's, but I would just want to speak for other people as a general concept to the hillside program that you're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Julie Donnelly?
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Julie Donnelly, and I live at 15305 Souview Drive. I've been a long-term resident of Los Gatos and fairly recently went through the process of building a new home in the hillside area of town. As part of that process, we spent a lot of time ensuring our home, which included our primary residence, garages, guest house, and surrounding hardscape and landscape development, met all of the hillside standards and guidelines. While this was challenging, and by the way, we're still married, I understand why it was necessary, and I think that people would appreciate the considerate design and the quality of the end product. After having gone through all of the effort to design our home, we ought to have the right to use it and feel safe using it, whether it be to go to the equipment pad, which was needed for the multiple water tanks required by the town, the dog run for our three animals, the outdoor entertainment area, or go to our storage spaces, none of which are within 30 feet from our main residence, we ought to have the right to secure those spaces from wild animals. We regularly see coyote on our property and have also seen deer carcasses with clear evidence of attack by another animal as close as 100 feet from our home. While our kids have all grown up, we will no doubt have grandkids one day, and we want to be able to provide them with a safe environment and not feel hemmed into a very small portion of our 4.3-acre parcel. We love the deer, and we designed our home to allow the deer and other animals free passage across our property, which they take advantage of every day. Any fencing that we would propose to be installed would meet the current hillside standards and guidelines and would not interfere with the free passage of wildlife across our property. I respectfully ask the Commission not to approve an ordinance that is arbitrarily applied to any home in the hillside, regardless of whether or not a problem exists, and ask that they work toward a needs-based ordinance to ensure free passage of wildlife across properties where it could be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the Speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much. Peter Donnelly?
Good evening, and yes, we're related. My name is Peter Donnelly. I also live at 15305 Souview Drive. Been here for many years and obviously went through building a house in the hillside area. As all of you know, in February 2017, the Town Council identified 16 ordinance priorities to be looked at. One of these, number seven, was the hillside fence ordinance, and the objective for that review, and I quote, "was to make certain that fences do not interfere with the wildlife corridors and those fences do not impede the movement of wildlife." This objective could be achieved in many ways, but as I read through the proposed ordinance, it's clear a very lazy approach was taken and selected to achieve the stated objective. Instead of trying to determine where the problems exist and how to rectify things, a baseline assumption was made that the problem exists everywhere and that every property, regardless of circumstances, should have the same rules enforced. This is akin to setting a 25 mile an hour speed limit on all of the roads in the United States, simply because certain roads warrant a lower speed limit. Can you imagine traveling along the freeway at 25 miles an hour? It's nuts, isn't it? It's no more nuts than having people with two, four, five, 10 acres of property being hemmed into 30 feet within their primary residence. And that's not including any other things around the house, primary residence as it's written right now. I respectfully ask the Commission to look for a solution that considers the circumstances of each individual property and enforces relevant rules to that property in a similar way you do with the FAR, which looks at the size of a property and determines how big a house you can put on that property. Seems very reasonable. Think of a rule, think of a proposal that follows the same approach. Or come up with a simple rule that says you must allow a 20-foot corridor, or a 30-foot corridor, or a 40-foot corridor in order to allow wildlife to pass through your property. That's a simple rule. Another option for the town to consider... right to use it and feel safe using it, whether it be to go to the equipment pad, which was needed for the multiple water tanks required by the town, the dog run for our three animals, the outdoor entertainment area, or go to our storage spaces, none of which are within 30 feet from our main residence, we ought to have the right to secure those spaces from wild animals. We regularly see coyote on our property and have also seen deer carcasses with clear evidence of attack by another animal as close as 100 feet from our home. While our kids have all grown up, we will no doubt have grandkids one day, and we want to be able to provide them with a safe environment and not feel hemmed into a very small portion of our 4.3-acre parcel. We love the deer, and we designed our home to allow the deer and other animals free passage across our property, which they take advantage of every day. Any fencing that we would propose to be installed would meet the current hillside standards and guidelines and would not interfere with the free passage of wildlife across our property. I respectfully ask the commission not to approve an ordinance that is arbitrarily applied to any home in the hillside, regardless of whether or not a problem exists, and ask that they work toward a needs-based ordinance to ensure free passage of wildlife across properties where it could be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much. Peter Donnelly.
Good evening, and yes, we're related. My name is Peter Donnelly. I also live at 15305 Soobee Drive. Been here for many years and obviously went through building a house in the hillside area. As all of you know, in February 2017, the town council identified 16 ordinance priorities to be looked at. One of these, number seven, was the hillside fence ordinance, and the objective for that review, and I quote, "was to make certain that fences do not interfere with the wildlife corridors and those fences do not impede the movement of wildlife." This objective could be achieved in many ways, but as I read through the proposed ordinance, it's clear a very lazy approach was taken and selected to achieve the stated objective. Instead of trying to determine where the problems exist and how to rectify things, a baseline assumption was made that the problem exists everywhere and that every property, regardless of circumstances, should have the same rules enforced. This is akin to setting a 25 mile an hour speed limit on all of the roads in the United States, simply because certain roads warrant a lower speed limit. Can you imagine traveling along the freeway at 25 miles an hour? It's nuts, isn't it? It's no more nuts than having people with two, four, five, 10 acres of property being hemmed into 30 feet within their primary residence. And that's not including any other things around the house, primary residence as it's written right now. I respectfully ask the commission to look for a solution that considers the circumstances of each individual property and enforces relevant rules to that property in a similar way you do with the FAR, which looks at the size of a property and determines how big a house you can put on that property. Seems very reasonable. Think of a rule, think of a proposal that follows the same approach. Or come up with a simple rule that says you must allow a 20-foot corridor, or a 30-foot corridor, or a 40-foot corridor in order to allow wildlife to pass through your property. That's a simple rule. Another option for the town to consider is to identify wildlife corridors that either exist today or that we wish to try and promote, and then establish rules around future developments to ensure those corridors are established or maintained. Think of it like a trail system for the animals. If we can do it for people, why can't we do it for the animals? We love having wildlife on our property, but you know, we also enjoy using our property. All of these approaches that I've suggested are needs-based versus the one that's been presented, which is arbitrary, punitive, and unnecessary, and I suggest that you not approve it. Thank you for your time.
Let me see if there's any questions. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding your analogy of doing 25 on the freeway. As I understand, all of the provisions that are coming to us, whatever is there now is grandfathered.
Ah, but if there's damage to the fence, you have to comply with the rules as they've been stated.
So if your fence is damaged, you have to stop from 85 and go to 25?
Absolutely. And for those people who are still developing their property, we only moved into our house a little over a year ago, for those people who have built houses, you know it takes a long time to finish a project. We have plans to put up fencing. They were discussed as part and parcel of our initial proposal. This rule would basically say, well, you know, sigh, you can't do them anymore. That's a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Field, Tanya Kerland, and David Klinger. Mr. Klinger? Your name and address, sir.
Okay. My name is Vadim Kerland. I live in 15275 Soobee Drive. We have purchased the property recently, built the house on it. We are back-to-back neighbors with Donnelly's. Before we could purchase the property, our seller, Peter Donnelly, had submitted the development application to the town of Los Gatos Community Development Department. This application lists environmental assessment form as one of the requested supporting documents, which in turn includes evaluation of environmental impacts. One of the issues listed on this and evaluated by this document seems particularly relevant to the newly proposed ordinance. The issue is titled, and the quote, "Would the project interfere substantially with the movement of any native resident or migratory fish or wildlife species or with established native resident or migratory wildlife corridors or impede the use of native wildlife nursery sites?" Determination was made in this study, and there was no impact. It's my understanding that the evaluation of environmental impacts and its findings were found satisfactory by the community development department since the project was given green light to proceed. This happened in 2007. The definition of the issue I just quoted appears to match or be very close to the description of the problem that the proposed ordinance is trying to address. The house has been built according to the plans, and nothing has changed since then, so this would seem to indicate that the problem doesn't seem to exist, at least for this, our property at least. In addition to that, when we purchased this land, we have agreed to a large number of easements. Some of them are pretty substantial and were designed specifically to protect the wildlife. For example, we have an area of almost seven acres that has been dedicated as scenic easement, and another area that has been dedicated to public access and designated trail easement. In addition to this recorded easements, we have agreed to, we arranged for the corridor for the deer to migrate across our property, which they do every day, and we agreed to build a watering hole for the deer. As you can see, we have already gone to considerable lengths to accommodate and protect the wildlife on and around our property. Our neighbors, Donnelly's particularly, have done the same, and some of the projects we actually have done together. So I can see how the ordinance, similar to the proposed one, may be useful in some situations, but I think the goal can be achieved better by stating specific circumstances when it is needed rather than creating a blanket policy that will require homeowners who do not need to apply to seek exemptions. The blanket policy like this creates unnecessary red tape and burden on many property owners where the adequate passage for the wildlife already exists. That's all.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Jeff, Kathy Field.
Yes, I'm Kathy Field. My family and I live at 15350 Soobee Drive in Los Gatos. We've lived there for five years and moved to Los Gatos in 2008. My thought on this subject deals more with the cost of housing that's very high in Los Gatos, and that every time you place new regulations or new ordinances, increase the cost of building, not just the cost of the permit, but also the cost of having somebody do designs, someone submit that to the town, then the town has to send an inspector, and it goes on and on. So the increased inspection requirements then cause property taxes to increase because they need to pay for the added work that the town has to do in order to make sure the ordinances are followed. Additionally, Los Gatos homeowners would be at a disadvantage when the regulatory burden in our town is, if it's greater than imposed than in other towns, if other towns do not have these same types of ordinances. Everybody has hillsides. And then putting yet another hoop for homeowners to jump through to improve their property will discourage some people from making necessary improvements. If their fence falls down, they may just leave it sort of toppled over or half up and half down. Doesn't look very good. And finally, and most importantly to me, is that all residents deserve the freedom to improve their property as they see fit and not to be burdened by costly regulation. Thank you.
Let me see if there's any questions. Any questions for the speaker? I have a question. Are you familiar with the town's intent, and it's achieved consistently, that the projects that they undertake for the citizens are normally paid for by the citizens, a pay-as-you-go basis, a neutral outcome, that the fee for the service covers the expense of the service? So there might not be an increase in taxes?
I believe that could be true, but I think that eventually, if you add enough regulations and enough ordinances, you have to have people checking. Are people building these fences? Are they doing the right things? Do you have someone drive out there to check it? I just feel it's usually not without some cost to...
I understand. You could be right. Thank you. Try that again. Jeff Casali?
Oh, Tanya? Hello, I'm Jeff Casali. I live at 17400 Phillips Ave. Let me start by saying I didn't expect to be back in front of this group so soon. I was here about a month ago for a project. You know, first and foremost, we purchased in the hillsides because we love the environment, we love the wildlife and the freedom, and the fact that you go there at night, you feel like you're in the mountains. So I think there is a very strong desire to make sure that we can continue that sort of environment. I have a couple of real challenges with this. One is a broader challenge where I've become more and more educated with the process to sort of put together regulations in the town, and you know, it can move pretty quickly, especially if you travel during the week and it's hard to make these meetings and you've got small children. You know, there's a lot that's going on here in terms of, you know, what can happen for these regulations to be passed. And I want to make sure I came here tonight for a couple of reasons. First one is, I think we should be cautious when we add these regulations into the town on the unintended consequences, both for the people residing here and the people that might move here and have no idea that when they purchase their house, they're picking up all of these other moving targets that have been added. If somebody goes and buys a house next month, how are they going to know that this fencing was passed and this is part of it? And so we're starting to create a lot of regulations that create a lot of complexity and a lot of surprises for people. But specifically getting to the animals, our property has a, we have a four-acre property. We probably have about a little over a half acre that's fenced. There's very nice animal corridors. You see them all the time. They move pretty freely between all the properties. I come from the East Coast. You know, for me, I love seeing the deer. I don't want them right up against the property. Lyme disease is a major issue. A lot of my friends I grew up with have contracted Lyme disease. You don't need to read peer review articles to know that wild deer getting closer and closer to houses and small children is going to increase the probability of ticks, and a preponderance of ticks carry Lyme disease. So you know, if we want to be able to have an environment where the intent is the animals can move freely, I think the vast majority of properties that's happening today, but I'm sure there are some that it's not, and I think the gentleman earlier that commented on a needs-based approach where we have that, I think that's absolutely the way we should look at it. If I just think, you know, of my situation, I just went through a two-year process for an approval of an extensive sort of change to the back. This would pretty much modify all the plans that we have in terms of the fencing and the way it would be impacted because we have existing fencing, as you know, from the rainy season and the storms. I've already had three trees fall on the fences that I have. So it's going to be virtually impossible to pass this and not end up in a situation where people are constantly trying to figure out, how do I repair my fences and what's the rule?
Thank you, Mr. Casali. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Tanya Kerland.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Kerland, and I live at 15275 Soobee Drive. I would like further address the issue of Lyme disease and how lowering the fences would affect people's health. And I would like to bring your attention to the University of California Berkeley study that was done in 2011 and showed that areas where the fence lizard have been removed saw a subsequent drop in the population of the ticks, which is actually controversial because previously it was thought that fenced lizard kind of cleared, you know, ticks from the disease that would be beneficial, increasing of lizards would be beneficial, but no. Even this beneficial host, this study clearly shows that even removal of this beneficial host reduced the number on affected ticks. So if you, we cannot completely prevent squirrels and lizard access to our backyard, but it doesn't mean that we should increase the number of ticks but lowering fences and inviting deers and big animals. If you look at the size of the animals, it's kind of obvious that the herd of deer scare so much many more ticks than small animals, isn't it? So infected ticks, adult ticks that feed off deer have been discovered in Santa Clara County, right? You know where we live. So what do experts advise? There's a section of Bay Area Lyme Foundation website named Create a Tick Safe Zone. They advise deer are important to ticks. They help ticks reproduce by acting as natural reservoir for Lyme bacteria. Don't plant things that attract deer and consider fencing to keep them out of your yard. And I also would like to bring your attention to Chapter 30, Neighborhood Preservation of Town Code, Section 3010-010, purpose it says. This chapter is adopted to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the town of Los Gatos and aimed at enhancing and preserving the quality of life and property values in the town. And I think that proposed changes will decrease the hillside property value and increase odds of people getting sick of Lyme disease. Therefore, I believe that that proposal contradicts the very purpose of Town Code, and I ask the committee to deny it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Ali Laclerk? David Foley?
Hi, my name is Ali Laclerk, and I am a resident at 15951 Quail Hill Road, which is a hillside property. So just a bit of background, I was lucky enough to grow up in Los Gatos, started at Blossom Hill School all the way through Los Gatos High. Big part of my childhood was spent outdoors at my parents', at my parents' house, which was a big contributor to my athletic career here, got me to Yale University where I graduated a few years ago. Just three months ago, my husband and I bought a house in Los Gatos on the hillside, and now as we start our own family here, I'd like for our children to have a similar experience to what I had growing up here in Los Gatos, and I fear with this proposed amendment, they won't. Besides the obvious points that many people here have made today around property values, the impact on property values, the damage wildlife can wreak on expensive landscape, and the cost of making any changes to my own backyard, I guess I'm slightly bothered by the attitude around how this will really affect the safety and the health of not only residents but of children here in Los Gatos. What kind of devastates me is that we're considering the protection of wildlife as more important than the protection of children, and obviously with one on the way, this is very high on my mind and a big priority for me. So the fact that I might have to worry about leaving my kids alone in the backyard saddens me to think they won't be safe. It saddens me to think about the potential health concerns that have been brought up around Lyme disease, around the fact that wildlife will be in very close proximity to my children. These are all things that worry me. So with that, I sincerely hope that as this proposal is considered, you take into account the ramifications on the quality of life that this will have on residents of Los Gatos and around children. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions? We have a question. Commissioner Hanson.
Do you have a fence at your property now?
We do. Our issue is that our, we just moved three months ago, our backyard is dirt. So if we're going to make any changes at all, this will significantly impact those changes, if we add any, you know, play structures, et cetera.
And you'd want to put fencing around that?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foley.
My name's David Foley. I live at 311 Santa Rosa Drive. We've been there since 2004, and like many other speakers here tonight, we really enjoy the wildlife, and our property does have a fence around it right now. And when I read this proposal, it says that it's, you know, the goal is to not eliminate migratory paths for the animals. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, I think a much better solution would be to make sure that there's a corridor between properties as opposed to fencing us in 30 feet from our property. Essentially, what that would do is cut off everything but our most basic yard, but all of our entertainment areas, our barbecue space, the play area for my son, all of those areas would have to be outside of a fence. And as I read the proposals, any changes were made, you would have to then pull down the fences there, and I don't think that's appropriate. I also believe that there is a lot of health and safety concern. We have a lot of deer, we have a lot of bobcats that run along our fence line. We see them along the fence line all the time, and we're happy that they're that far out. We don't want them much closer to our house. And so I would ask that you consider all of the feedback that you've gotten tonight and not approve this.
See if there's any questions. I have one. You said something about, about a minute ago, you said if the fence fell down or came down, you'd have to...
We'd have to adhere to these new regulations, and if we wanted to change that part of the fence, we're now going to have that fence at one height at one place and half the height at another place.
Let me see clarification. Is that accurate?
If it's greater than 50% of that wall or fence segment, then yes, as it's currently written.
So if a small section came down, it would appear that's not the case. But if half the thing came down, that might be the case.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina Brinkman.
Good evening. I'm Katrina Brinkman. I live at 308 Belgados Lane next to Belgados Park in Los Gatos with my husband, Valerian, and three children. The park connects to multiple, the park next to us connects to multiple open spaces and is heavily visited. I love the wildlife in our area. In the last week alone, I have seen coyotes, squirrels, rabbits, owls, Norway rats, wood rats, lizards, deer, hawks, turkey vultures, wild turkeys on my property. The coyote was 10 feet from my goat and 10 feet from my puppy, which was outside the pen. Occasionally, there are bobcats and snakes. I don't find the 30-foot guideline a one-size-fits-all option for several reasons. Keep in mind that your note states that these affect 25% of the properties in Los Gatos of what I read on the last paperwork on your website. My concern is that I would need to adhere to these new guidelines if I needed to repairs. So a case in point, a car takes out the front of my fence, I may have to replace the whole thing. Here are some issues that I've dealt with in the last four years. More than 35% of my property line is shared with Belgados Park. Another approximately 35% is shared with an uphill neighbor who has an upper road with a retaining wall. A great deal of my land in the back is over 40% slope. I have goats that take care of the steep backyard, and I have a large portion of my yard as open space easement anyways. We moved into an existing space that was completely enclosed with high chain link on the park side and one of my neighbors and a metal rail fencing around the 1.7-acre property. I have a corner lot that is pie-shaped with a stop sign at the lower point next to the park entrance. This does not stop deer or any animal from enjoying my yard. Your guidelines don't mention... Your guidelines don't mention shared property fences with the town parks. I am one of the few properties over there and next to the open space that does have a park, that does have fencing, excuse me. Less than a 50, 60-inch high fence and only 30 feet from my house would allow dogs and people in my yard. Also, the fencing at the park does not keep out people at the night. I am still working with the police department about a man that has been harassing me verbally for over two years and threatened to kill me and my child in the last year. This issue has gotten better since April. The fencing in front keeps out teen smokers and dogs off-leash. This occurs daily at the empty lots next to me. So, if I start losing my fencing in front, it becomes a free-for-all, as it is in the park at occasion. I'm still trying to get geocaching taken out of my front yard that is next to the fencing. Back halfway through the property does have a split rail to keep my goat inside and my dog outside the area. Not having a barrier on the split rail fencing around my house would not keep my dog in in general. I'm looking for guidelines how to keep the deer out even though I'm completely fenced in. If these changes were made, I think it would be impossible for me to live here based on the proximity to a park and would be difficult to sell if I start losing fronts of my fencing. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Ms. Brinkman, I lived for a long time on Bellevue, not too far away, and I know the issues with the park and I guess they're still there. Is, is Belgados considered hillside?
Where I am, I'm hillside.
Because of your slope?
Because of my slope. There's four properties on Belgados Lane that are hillside.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy DeSantos. David Fox. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. Cindy DeSantis, 16860 Cypress Way, Los Gatos. We've been there for about 18 years and I want to address enforcement problems. Even if we should do this, the town has no means to do it. We have a hillside neighbor who without permits has built a guest house behind his house. He's built two pools, all on what the old maps call the old landslide. He's built a cantilever driveway 80 feet long. He's covered over four large oak trees. He's built drainage without burying pipes or putting a diffuser at the end. He's removed the native plants, the hardscape, and now he's putting in palm trees. He's installed bright lights and is not turning them on, so I guess that's okay to have those there. And he's also built walls, stacked walls, one that's seven feet high and one that's probably 80 feet high on filled land and that one is seven blocks. What are they, seven inches apiece? Okay? All of these are breaking the hillside code. In the last 15 years, the planning department and the legal department have not been able to enforce the current codes due to lack of budget and manpower, not even to impose fines. How can they be expected to enforce these new fence codes if it's going to affect 25% of the population in Los Gatos? It's just not practical. We need to spend more time trying to keep the hillside codes that we have functioning. And I'm on an acre of land and I have my backyard fenced in, which is probably less than half of the property, and the whole front is an open corridor for animals where we have quite a few. The deer basically live there. They don't just travel through. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
Can you repeat your address?
16860 Cypress Way.
And your neighbor's address?
You can talk, Joel knows all about this. They have been trying very hard, but it just involves so much time.
Thank you.
I just spoke to the assistant town attorney about what you were saying and do we have any comments on the development of this situation?
We don't have any comments. We have been working for a long time. This is a very longstanding issue that goes back a decade at least.
2002 is when we were in this meeting trying to...
So, there's a lot of history and the town attorney, I have passed that up to the town attorney and we are looking for solutions. We will be meeting next week, the town attorney, code compliance officer, myself, and try a different tactic because the tactics to date have not been successful.
It's frustrating not to have the ability to do something about a report like yours and I'm sorry for your trouble.
Well, there's been so many breaches of the hillside code, but, you know, we have to go through all this due process and it's very time-consuming.
Well, thank you very much.
And we just don't have the manpower or the budget to just stay on it and finish it.
Thank you, ma'am. David Fox.
Yeah, go with this one. Advance your slides. What about the left? Oh. Would you push like the forward thingy? Yes.
I printed those guys out.
In my haste to send...
You'll, you'll need to carry the mic with you so it can be recorded. Thank you.
Excuse me, in my haste to send Mr. Mullen the exhibits today, I erroneously substituted the wrong sheet for sheet three and sheet three just shows a diagram where you would have designated setbacks.
Thank you.
So...
Let's, let's run the clock over, please. Is it, is it going to move?
That would be the idea.
Put it up on the table so we can see it.
Stay. Don't click anything like that. My name is David Fox, 50 University Avenue, Los Gatos. I'm a landscape architect. I spend most of my days doing design work for the residents of Los Gatos and the hillsides. What my clients are mainly interested in when it comes to fencing are security, containment, and safety. They want the security for their property from two-legged and four-legged predators. They'd like containment for their children so the balls aren't going down the hills all the time and they'd like the safety of being able to let their pets and animals outside without having to worry about the coyotes and all the things that come up and sniff their sliding glass doors daily if they don't have fencing. And the, there's already, this is a partial map of the Highlands of Los Gatos. The hatched areas are scenic easements that we put in place when we got the PD done for the Highlands. And as you can see, they cover pretty much half of the lots. Those are very wide corridors for, for wildlife. Some of them are in excess of 100 feet wide. That's one solution that we could do. Some of the people had suggested doing designated corridors. This is an example of designated corridors. Let's say a 40-foot rear easement and 20-foot on the side. If you had adjacent properties, it would yield you a 40-foot corridor. If you had rear property lines together, it would give you an 80-foot corridor for passage, but it would still allow for the people that live on the lots to fence enough of the property that they could contain the items that they have, the design items that they have, and provide a measure of safety and security. On the first page of the desk item that I sent, that's a real lot. That is a lot that I'm working on today. The proposal that my clients and I are working on is only 2% of the lot. The area that would be the eating area and the dining area is only 2% of the lot and yet under the current proposal, they couldn't even fence that even though it's only 2% of the lot and 98% of the lot would be free. I think that the other people have said it very well, that it should be on a need basis and not be slapped down. Every single lot is the same, therefore we need to do the same thing on every single lot. And just to give you an idea, our friend here, from where I am standing right here, from here to that wall is 40 feet. I'm pretty sure the raccoon could amble his way up a 40-foot corridor. Were it the back property lines, it would be double this width. If we impose something like that or if you have scenic easements or if you do it on a need basis, you're going to get the corridors that you want, but you're still going to allow the people to use their properties. I would urge you to turn this down. Thank you very much.
Questions for the speaker? Mr., Mr., you all can't do that. Stop it. Mr. Fox.
It'll give me a big head. You guys quit it.
We received many excellent letters and yours was one of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I don't know where to start, actually, because I want to respond to some of the things that were said, but I also want to make an overall comment to begin with, that when we're considering the fence ordinance right now, a lot of the comments that are being made are specific to the fence ordinance and individual homeowners' desires, but the fence ordinance that's being proposed is simply a matter of codifying what is already in the hillside design guidelines, the general plan, and the, and the tree ordinance. And aside from that, when you're looking at a specific area of a plan, you also have to relate it to the whole hillside standards and developments and the overall intent of them. And I don't have the verbiage in front of me, but a lot of it is maintaining the natural character of the hillsides, maintaining the trees, the wildlife, just the aspect of the hillsides that is, is natural. And so, I want to put that in context. And people choose to live in the hillsides and when they choose to live someplace, just like when I choose to live closer to downtown, there are certain things that affect me that don't affect the hillsides, vice versa. If you choose to live in the hillsides, you're choosing to live with these things. I'd like to address some of the things that have been said. I believe that there's a lot of misconception that has been said. People talked about fencing in their vineyards that would be allowed by this ordinance. They talked about fenced playgrounds that are further from their house. They could be fenced in. It's allowed by this ordinance.
I need you to not do that. That's disrespectful and we want to be respectful. Thank you very much. When the speaker's done, I'll check the point, but not now. Please continue, Ms. Quintana.
You are allowed to have non-wildlife-friendly fences around your house to 30 feet. It's not a question of you can't have any protection. Repairs, I think that's already been mentioned. If it's just a section of the fence, they can be repaired. They don't have to be replaced to meet the new standards. If they're existing, they don't have to be replaced to be the new standards. And permits, I think that is a question that you are going to address and I personally think that we need to find a way that fences would not be subject to the total cost of minor residential permits, but that would be on a time and cost basis or something of that sort. Lyme's disease, I think Dr. Weissman will be addressing that. And also, okay, that's it.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Jervis.
Thank you. You mentioned that the provisions of the proposed changes are already included in existing town documents. Can you point, because I didn't see it in, in the material I have looked at, where the 30 feet from the house is in existing town documents?
It's in the hillside development standards and guidelines. And if I could elaborate on that, I, Dr. Fox indicated, suggested that the, you consider a change in that to 30 feet from the approved development area? Well, that's a huge loophole because if you design your house to have a large patio with an attached playground and attached barbecue and attached swimming pool and attached accessory building, dog run, whatever, all within that developed area, then, you know, this could be a huge, huge area. And I, I may get in trouble for saying this, but I agree that 30 feet from the house may not be adequate. Maybe 40 feet is more adequate, more reasonable, but not an, an open-ended ability to get an approval and then add to it. And swimming pools and, like I said, swimming pools, I believe accessory structures, they're, they're all allowed certain things, but they can't necessarily if they're more than 30 feet connected to the house.
I think we've answered the question.
Yeah, I have. Sorry about that.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Could I just ask you to check on the 25% of the population affected by this ordinance? I, I don't think 25% live in the hillsides.
I'm sure staff will make a note of that. I have a question for staff. A comment was made that if I had a playground outside the 30-foot perimeter, that I would be allowed to fence that area for the protection of the children. Is that accurate?
I believe Ms. Quintana is referring to the exceptions, which are on page six of exhibit eight, and the first one is fencing around swimming pools, outdoor sports courts, and similar structures. I'm assuming she's lumping playgrounds into similar structures and that would be the exception. There's nothing, nothing in the code currently that explicitly says playgrounds.
But there'd be some wiggle room to look at that.
There would be, yes.
Thank you. Rick Tinsley. Steve Doughty. And David Weissman.
Hello, everyone. My name's Rick Tinsley. I live at 16555 South Kennedy Road. I've lived there for 16 years and that's about a mile and a half out of town and it is hillside. The proposed ordinance is, quite frankly, very burdensome and, and completely impractical. During the 16 years that I've lived in my property, I've, from time to time, grown grapes, blueberries, blackberries, figs, lemons, nectarines, pomegranates, all sorts of vegetables, flowers and ornamental plants, of course. None of these would have been at all possible if not for a fence surrounding the area where I grow things, which tends to be all over my property, that would be in direct conflict with the guidelines. And granted, that's already built historical, but I've been there 16 years. I just built the third fence. Fences don't last forever. They have a finite life. So, essentially, this ordinance would prevent anyone from, let's say, enjoying my property the way I have for the past 16 years. The reality is hillsides have very limited planting zones, not planting zones as nicely defined in the geometry of the proposed ordinance, but there are slopes, trees, sun exposure, irregular, irregular lot sizes and so forth in shapes that limit where various items can be planted. This ordinance effectively prohibits all but decorative fences and with the thriving deer population we have, it's pretty clear that the explosion of development that we've seen certainly since I've been in town and over the last several decades and the explosion of fences that would be in, in direct conflict with this, with this ordinance have not put a dent in the deer population. Anyone who thinks actually the deer population has suffered by virtue of these types of developments, I invite you to come over to my house early some morning or late in the evening sometime. Probably the deer population here is at an all-time high and I would grant any of the well-intended people who are concerned about that to provide any empirical evidence that deer have actually suffered. I'm from the East Coast and there, many towns have sort of already gone through this cycle of protecting deer and now actually getting rid of deer because they've become too numerous, which creates all sorts of other problems. In terms of insects, we've heard a lot about ticks. I know we'll hear a lot more about ticks. Again, I grew up on a farm. I know all about ticks. I'm not afraid of ticks. But fleas one summer actually prevented my kids from using their playground, the trampoline and the playset. This was many years ago when our kids were small and it was one of the few flat places on our property and the deer loved to lie there in the afternoons and we thought they were beautiful, of course, but the play yard became so infested with fleas, my kids couldn't use it for the entire summer and we all were covered in flea bites that summer. From a practical standpoint, this ordinance is not enforceable. I mean, we can talk about leaf blowers and all the other things that have been mentioned with hillside regulations. The mark of a good government is a legislature that doesn't pass laws that it has no capability nor honestly the intention of enforcing. So, in summary, and most importantly to me, with all the very real and very serious and evident problems we have with traffic, parking, school crowding, school quality, a $50 billion-plus unfunded pension liability, I really want to know, why is our government choosing to fight this particular fight? I encourage you to reconsider, A, what real problem we're actually trying to solve and B, whether this is the appropriate solution.
Let's see if there's any questions for the speaker. Commissioner Birch.
I was going to ask a question of staff.
I was going to ask a question of staff. Is that okay? It has to do with what the speaker said. I want to make sure I'm reading the exceptions correctly. In Section E, number three, it says enclosed fencing around vineyards, orchards, and vegetable gardens do not have to be wildlife-friendly. Is that anywhere on the property, or is that limited to within 30 feet of the home?
That's anywhere on the property, but I believe Mr. Tinsley was referencing, he didn't necessarily have an orchard, he just had various trees planted around, and so he fenced in his yard.
And then that wouldn't necessarily, because it's not a designated.
We would have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
If I could respond to that.
There was no question. What's your response?
Well, practically speaking, I do, I have trees, and Joel's been out, he knows what my place looks like. I have trees in various places, and grapes on the north side of the hill, and the vegetable garden on one of the few sunny places where I have enough sun to grow vegetables. I could build like three or four, or five or six small fences, which would be across an incredible eyesore to do that, versus a perimeter fence around the back half of the property, which is what is the common sense solution that most people use today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Doughty.
Okay. I am nowhere near as eloquent, and I would probably say prepared as everyone else, but I am a Los Gatos resident since 1959, and I can assure you, I agree with everyone on the deer population. When I grew up, it was a blue moon to see deer, coyote, or whatever. I do live up on Sioux View Drive. I have three and a half acres, which I worked very hard to buy. I grew up on Kennedy, like I said, and I think that now I have more deer and animals than I do have mice running around on my property. I mean, in all honesty, they're there all the time. I love them. We don't mess with them, but I will tell you, the closer the deer are to our property, and our kids, and our dogs, we do get ticks, we get fleas, and we have been putting in an active effort, you know, to try and push them back a little bit. I can assure you, they've probably chewed up $20,000, $30,000 worth of my gardens. So it's not that I wish to get rid of them. 30 feet wouldn't even put my guest house, you know, within my property limits, or my pool, or my gardens, or my garages, or anything. So I think that the rule of, one rule fitting everybody's different property is not good. I do believe that up where we live, we have 25 acres with seven homes, and everyone has only a small portion fenced. The deer roam on the roads, they're everywhere, the coyote, the fox, we even have a lynx that's up all the time. I see it in my backyard. So the animals are all over. I think that really, the biggest thing for me is I moved back into Los Gatos so that I could have more space, and I believe that it's just too cumbersome, or someone telling me that I'm stuck within 30 feet of my property. I just, I didn't spend that kind of money, and I know these people didn't spend that kind of money to live up on a hill with a view, to be told that 30 feet's all you get. If you have more land, because if I come down into the neighborhoods and I look everywhere else, everyone's property is fenced all the way to the hilt, and you see all the animals running around in the streets. So like I say, I'm not as eloquent, and I am a contractor, and I can assure you, since this issue has come up, I work on all the big houses, I'm a drilling contractor, all over up and down the valley, and I can assure you, the black cyclone fence is used everywhere, and you see them in Woodside, Portola Valley, all over the place, and I do agree with the gentleman, they're definitely quite invisible. So I think it'd be bad to limit that one. But case-by-case basis, I think is good. One rule for everyone, I just don't agree. So please, let's nix it.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Weisman.
Dave Weisman. In asking for a revision of the current fence ordinance, we attempted to get codified various goals and standards already listed in several locations within town documents. Specifically, already in-town documents are the following. The town's 2020 general plan use states, quote, "preserving riparian corridors and wildlife habitats in new and existing developments." The hillside guidelines similarly call for the following, quote, "protecting wildlife corridors and avoiding wildlife usage areas to the maximum extent possible." Toward that goal, the hillside guidelines require that, and these are all quotes, "fences shall not be allowed in areas that would impede the movement of wildlife." Two, "only open fencing shall be located within 20 feet of the property line adjacent to a street." Three, the photograph on page 43 of the guidelines, "roller character of hillside fences allow wildlife to pass through." And lastly, four, "deer fencing shall be limited to areas around ornamental landscaping. Large areas shall not be enclosed," end quotes. And what do the hillside guidelines say about hillside areas and the planting of ornamental landscaping? Very clearly, "formal gardens shall be limited to locations immediately adjacent to the house, such as entryways or small gardens at the rear, and all such formal plantings shall be within planting zone one, which is defined in the document, within 30 feet of the house. Move farther than 30 feet from the house according to both the hillside guidelines and the tree protection ordinance, and only native species are allowed." So we have a tree ordinance that protects the trees in our hillsides, but a forest without its animals is both non-sustainable, and now recognized as an important resource and environmental issue, as discussed at the last fence plant meeting by three environmental organization experts. It is also very frustrating to have citizens complain about their perceived inability to protect their current orchards and vineyards, repair their current fences, and protect their pets and children. These objectives are all permitted under the proposed revisions, and within the framework of the goals and standards of the hillside guidelines. And once again, deer in California are not a major carrier of Lyme disease ticks. Living in the hillsides of Los Gatos is a balance between property rights and ecological sustainability. We have to share our hillside with the animals that have lived there before we did. I think that these revisions strike a good balance, and I urge their passage tonight as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
The last speaker spoke about a black chain-link fence, as did another speaker. Was there a reason why this couldn't be considered as plausible under the new amendments? A black chain-link fence?
Because it's not animal, animals can't pass through it. If you look on page 43 of the hillside guidelines, there is a picture of a rural, open, animal-friendly fence. All we're asking is that this become the standard for those areas of hillside properties that are greater than 30 feet from the main house. There are exceptions built in for various sorts of things, and people have the option of coming into the town and speaking to the community director, or coming to various sources to get exceptions for play yards. We've already got the pool exceptions and other things. But a chain-link fence is not animal-friendly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Genov.
The same question as before. The hillside standards and guidelines indicated 30-foot distance for purposes of landscape ornamental planting around the house. Can you point to the area in the hillside development standards and guidelines that specifically speaks to a fence at 30 feet from the house?
As there are, if you look on page 42 and 43 in the hillside guidelines.
I'm looking at pages 42 and 43.
There are a number of statements which I just read. Deer fencing shall be limited to areas, this is page 43, "deer fencing shall be limited to areas around ornamental landscaping. Larger areas shall not be enclosed." Also on page 43, "fences shall not be allowed in areas that would impede the movement of wildlife." Page 43 also, "only open fencing shall be located within 20 feet of the property line adjacent to a street." I mean, these things.
So you're equating the deer fence with the 30-foot restriction that has, that's speaking to the landscape design, so that's not a direct link, but you're making that connection? Okay, thank you.
What I'm saying is that landscaping is limited to within 30 feet of the house, because that's zone one. When you get out, when you get farther than 30 feet from the house, the hillside guidelines, on I believe it's page 52, say that only native plants can be planted. So people that are asking for fences out farther than 30 feet for their ornamental landscaping, the landscaping itself is in violation of the hillside guidelines. And also, the tree protection ordinance.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
So I wanted to talk about the exceptions, and I'm just going to come up with a hypothetical example. So you have a property that's, say, four or five acres, and the house, you know, maybe takes up, you know, less than half an acre of the property. I don't know if that's valid from a far perspective, but, so the house is there, and they decide, and they decide that they want to do ornamental landscaping, and they stay within the 30 feet of the house, but then, but then they want to build a, you know, swimming pool over here, and a play structure over here, and some other outdoor use over here, and then they want to have a chicken coop somewhere else. And so what, how do you see that playing out in terms of fencing? They're spread out all over the link. Are they going to have like little islands of fences all over, or, you know, are they going to put a fence all the way around, or?
Well, the town, okay, we can, town codes already require fencing around swimming pools. Okay? You could, there are, there is the general in Section E1, fencing around swimming pool, outdoor sports courts, and similar structures. We could certainly make that more specific to playground areas. But the other thing is, and yes, you could put separate fencing around these structures, which would certainly be preferable.
I'm not really seeing the humor in this. There's some important decisions to be made, and there are values at stake, there are hillsides at stake. So let the speaker continue, please.
That would be preferable to putting a fence around the whole four or five acres, or whatever. And the property owner has the option of coming into the town and saying, I have, we're obviously not going to think of all eventualities, but coming into the town and saying, this is what I'd like to do, what do you think? And the community director has that option to make that exception. And, I mean, what we don't want to do, we've already got these requirements in the hillside guidelines. Either change the hillside guidelines, or let's make them enforceable. We've got this vision.
I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Weisman. No, I do have a question. I know that you've worked on this for months and months, if not years and years, the same with protecting trees, and you always seem to be there, but on this one, you've actually worked with town, with the staff in developing some proposed language.
Yes.
Now, the hillside standards and guidelines are wonderful reading for those who live up there, and how much this goes to protect you. My name's on it, in 2008, when town council approved this document. Lee Quintana's name is on it, and we've really tried to passionately, albeit appropriately, protect and defend anything concerning those precious hillsides. So there may be some immediate bumps we have here, and the issue of respect earlier, and I may be getting on a turn, but Lee and Dave have gone to hell and back to protect those hillsides. I just want to share that with you. So you've got a worker on your side, even though we currently seem to have a bump, that we will try and find our way around. Thank you, doctor. Michael. Michaelis? Lisa Doughty? Todd? Come on.
Mike Michaelis, I live at 6800 Cypress Way. I wasn't going to speak on this, but obviously, a lot of people have, you've seen a sense of a dichotomy between people that live in the hillside and people that don't, and especially when it affects the wildlife. There's, at least from a layman's perception, there's a lot of wildlife there, and the problem is, they're coming down to feed easily, more easily than they can, where they, where they, where rather they live, maybe, where they have vast open spaces. And so, and I think that, you've heard from people that have really been impacted by them. You've also heard from people that maybe haven't been impacted by them, and think we ought to restrict things more. Well, the hillside standards in the guidelines were originally guidelines, and now they're gospel, and it affects what people can do there already. But I worry about the sort of discriminatory presence between people in town and the people that live in the hillsides, and what the people are there, what right they have to enjoy their own property, and, you know, follow all the guidelines they're supposed to. And I really, I really came to speak about the permitting process, and why the standard for building a fence in town should be different than building on the hillside. Why there should be a $2,200 fee in a review process to build the same fence in the hillside that there is in town. The government here exists to serve the interests of all people. We all pay the same taxes, and we all should get the same service, to provide the protection that we deserve for our property, ourselves, our children, and the landscape, whatever. And I would just look to the town to be equitable in how you deal with this. It's a tough issue, this interface between the human population and the animal population, but that's life. That's the world we live in. And I think the town's done a fairly good job of doing this over time. It's, Los Gatos is still a great place to live. We all live here, we enjoy it, and I think we've maintained the sense of Los Gatos and what it's about, so.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Lisa Doughty.
Yes, hello, I'm Lisa Doughty. I live on 15284 Sioux View Drive since 2005. Previous to that, I lived over on Kennedy Road for about five years, 1985 to 1989. During the time that I've lived here, I have never seen an issue with the animals being able to migrate, or get around, or feed themselves, or in any way. And I, my question to you is, is why? Why are we doing this? Because they've increased in size, and population, and species over the time that I've lived here, and why do, and obviously, what the ordinances that are in place have been doing their jobs. So why are we changing them now to something that is totally unreasonable to the human population? Okay? It doesn't, this ordinance does not take into effect every single hillside property, and every hillside property is different in its own way. Ours is tiered. Are we to have a different fence on every tier? Because, you know, we built on tiers, because it were hillside property. And we are a very small percentage of development on our three and a half acres, and there's more than enough land for animals to migrate, grow, populate, and I'm sure, you know, they feed off a lot of vegetation, that whether it be, you know, natural vegetation, deer-friendly vegetation, or deer-resistant vegetation, they eat everything. So I'm sure we are feeding these animals as well. And I just have, do not understand that why we cannot just keep the ordinance that are in place. They're working. They're working, and we don't need to do anything else. Because I would like to know where the problem is. Where are they not migrating to? Where, where's the bottleneck? Because I don't, I can't see it. So I, I propose that you just disregard this.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Hi. My name's Todd Gummo, 17144 Millrise Way. My wife and I have lived there for over 25 years now. And when I first heard about this ordinance, I didn't think it involved being, I didn't want to be concerned about it, until I actually read it today. And then I, because I thought, you know, the large homes that have, sit on like 10, 20 acres on the side of the hill, you didn't want to be fencing them in. And I understood all that. But we actually live on a flat acre, and it deals with us as well. And a lot of our neighbors are on flat parcels. And according to this rule, I couldn't have my enclosed yard the way it is now. Because I have the black galvanized fencing on the backyard. And there's maybe, I have about 15 feet of fencing that's within 30 feet of my house. So basically, if any of that gets damaged, I can't replace what's there. And so I have three dogs. You know, I have young nieces, and my children are grown, but I expect to have grandchildren someday. And I don't want to have to have, you know, this 42-inch animal fence that they can climb over to get the Kennedy Road. And then on the front of our property, we have two large brick walls, about 20 feet wide each, that were there when we bought the property. If one of those got damaged, we couldn't replace it because of the rule. If it's over, I think it's over 50 feet or over 25 percent, as the way it's written now. And so the problem I have is, if a truck comes and hits one of our walls out front, this lovely old brick wall that, we couldn't replace it. I'd have to put a 42-inch animal fence. And so I just think it's, obviously, I agree with a lot of what they say about the hillside homes, but it's too broad. You're actually dealing with homes that are much smaller, flat parcels, that are actually usable acreage, not 10 acres with nine of it unusable. So the way it's written just doesn't make sense. That's it.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much, sir. Shoshana O'Reiner, followed by David Klinger.
Good evening. I'm Shoshana O'Reiner, 14320 Arnarich Road. And I agree with much of what had been said tonight, but I want to speak to something very specific about fair and reasonable use of the property. There are exceptions in this proposed ordinance for fencing vineyards and fencing enclosures for animals. But I wanted to speak about responsible livestock caring. The zoning for the hillside area allows for livestock. And what's considered good practice for sustainable livestock management is rotational pastures. And so that means you put the animals in a small piece of your pasture. The next week, you move the fence, you put them in a different piece of the pasture, let that first piece recover. You do that through four or five different pastures. What that does is it prevents erosion, it allows the land to regenerate better, and it increases the water holding capacity of that land, making it more drought resistant, all of which are things that are highly important in a dry hillside area. The proposed ordinance has the necessity to apply for a more than $2,000 permit for any fencing you want to put in. So my concern is that this will encourage people, rather than moving fencing, because it's unsustainable to apply for a $2,000 permit every week, every month, whatever that might be, instead to enclose a much larger area than necessary permanently with subdivisions, so that you have that rotational pasture. And it would then go opposite to the purpose of this ordinance, which is to provide more open space for wild animals. So instead of having the deer be able to come through two-thirds of the property most of the time, that entire area would then have to be closed off permanently in order for people to be in compliance with the ordinance without having to continually apply and spend the money and the time and all of those things for movable fencing. So while I agree with much of what has been said here about whether or not this ordinance should be passed, and I think that one-size-fits-all is not a sustainable option, if this ordinance does go forward, I strongly, strongly urge to increase the exception for the use of livestock to include the possibility for movable fences within an area to allow people to sustainably keep their pastures the way that makes the most sense in this region.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. David Klinger?
Thank you. I'm Dave Klinger, 141 Potomac Drive. I'm speaking now, and I don't wish not to compete with the hillside issue, because it's a real issue that needs to be discussed. I'm, I would like to talk about the flatland residential height, fence height. I have written a letter to you. I also wrote a letter to city council. I didn't see it in the package tonight, but perhaps it's there, where I tried to go into more detail. The bottom line, basically, is that many, many fences in the flatland area are higher than six feet, which is the standard. There, having talked with staff, almost no one applies for an exception for that. So, and there, there is very little enforcement action, according to code compliance officer. So people are okay with fences higher than six feet. I would like, my request is, is that staff be directed to determine whether, in fact, there is widespread noncompliance with this ordinance. And if there is, is that acceptable to the city, that many people don't comply? And third would be to bring back some options for how to bring people into compliance, because many people are not in compliance right now. I'm, I'm absolutely sure of that. A simple solution, which I have proposed, there may be much better ideas, excuse me, would be to stick with the six-foot high. If people want to go seven feet, which is kind of the de facto standard with open lattice, and the neighbors all approve, that way you could, if, if that were allowable, then almost everybody would be compliant. You wouldn't have to go to the city and go through the process and try to demonstrate a quote "special privacy concern" to have a fence more than six feet. So I think there's an easy way out of this that would make a lot of people a lot more compliant, and you wouldn't have the compliance issue. So I'm just here as good governance. I already have my fence, and so I have nothing to gain or lose on it. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Your letter was in the packet, sir.
What, the recent one?
I said, I said we received many good letters, and yours was one of them.
Okay.
I, I had it out, and I think Commissioner Birch took it, so I can't find it right now.
That's fine.
But I want to thank you for that.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Well, we seem to have something of a sticky wicket. At least as I see it, I don't speak for the other commissioners. So what I'm going to do is ask staff to frame the issue before us. This is not an up or down decision, per se. This is a recommendation to council that we deny the proposed revisions, or we revise them further and send them to council where the final decision on this proposed change will take place. So Mr. Paulson, frame the issue and the path before us.
I will let Mr. Mullen take that on, and if we have questions following that, then I am here to help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullen.
So the decision, if you will, tonight is to, and the recommendation is to provide a recommendation to council, and your recommendation could be to recommend approval as the draft ordinance is written, recommend approval with changes. You could also continue the item to a date certain and come back to, and provide some direction to staff to make changes and come back with a revised draft ordinance for the same consideration. You could also forward the draft ordinance with a recommendation of denial to get to town council.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have in our staff report a number of issues and questions that we brought up in July, where they've done some research and responded to us. I wanted to make sure we clearly were aware of that, that a lot of work has been done, and a lot of the questions we've attempted to answer. But I turn to you for what Mr. Mullen just said, and give me a sense of where you'd like to go with this. Recommend it as is, recommend it with specific changes, and/or to recommend to council that we deny it, and in the end analysis, I will take that as a motion. So Commissioner Badami.
That was Commissioner Birch that had her hand up.
Commissioner Birch.
It's the blond hair that happens.
They all look alike.
I'm actually just going to kind of jump in with a pretty blunt statement that I think the hillside guidelines as they're written is fine. I also have a very hard time when I was reading this and listening to all the testimony, taking the one-size-fits-all approach. I believe that there are, as we have seen with the hillsides, the properties are all very unique. We take them typically as a, as they come basis, and I feel that this falls under the same purview as that, in my mindset. Thirty feet feels entirely too small, and it really is just being generated based on a landscape line item out of the hillside guidelines. So to me, I would not recommend this as approved. I mean, I did read all the staff's concerns too, but I just felt taking a higher level and just saying, "All in all, I don't think I would recommend it go on." I see too many issues with this, and I see it actually becoming more of an issue for staff than what it would be if we took it on a case-by-case basis, because if it were me, I would be, everyone that builds fences is going to come in asking for an exception. So to me, I feel like we're creating more of a bottleneck for staff by doing this than if we keep the hillsides as they are. We trust staff's review, we trust them to be looking at the wildlife corridors, because they do right now. They work with developers to create these setbacks, they already do this, so I just, to me, this is not a document I would forward. So that's kind of my overlying statement, but I would gladly hear what my other commissioners think.
Commissioner Hanson.
I have a similar view to Commissioner Birch. The hillside design standards and guidelines generally speak to all the goals that we want to accomplish. And if I'm understanding the process, if someone's going to go build a sport court or a play structure or whatever, and it crosses the knee where they need a town permit, I would imagine that the fencing would be part of that discussion unless there's a standalone fence. And so, so the one thing I did think that I could agree with that was in the document is that I do think there's a difference between the flatlands and the hills in terms of approaching fencing, but I don't know what about that isn't covered in the hillside design guidelines, which doesn't apply to the flatlands anyways, because there's a lot of language. There's a whole chapter here with a section on fences. And so I'm not sure what addition we get out of the changing our town code that would be beneficial to addressing the issues when we already have the hillside design guidelines. And I too was having issues with the one-size-fits-all. The 30-foot thing just doesn't make sense to me. It's for ornamental landscaping, but not for any other land use, and there's so many land uses that people have. Having different height limits and 42 inches here and 60, it just doesn't seem like it would work well with every property. We have one-acre lots, we have five-acre lots, we have 10-acre lots, we have slopes, we have not slopes. And I just, I just have this view of this, of having hearings at the planning commission about fences and fence exceptions, and development review committee, and staff being all fogged up. And I, again, didn't hear any problem. I, you know, heard some of the testimony. We haven't heard of any specific problems that have happened by not having a tighter fence ordinance yet. So generally speaking, I can't think of what to keep in here, except for the notion of the hills versus not hills. And as far as the permit part goes, at first I thought it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to require a permit, but then I think a lot of people are going to go and do a project in their backyard, like build a pool, and part of the pool would be having to have a fence, and I wouldn't want people to have to get an extra permit for their fence in addition to getting the permit for the pool. And as far as the standalone fence, you know, would go, I mean, we have these guidelines that have to happen, so. And then when I heard the stuff about moving fences around, we have to create more exceptions for the livestock, so I don't even know if the, having the permit for the fence makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami.
I would just like to clarify, and this might be for the audience, that we're having this meeting at the direction of the town council. On January 31 of 2017, they held a study session to identify strategic priorities for 2017. And at the study session, four council members identified hillside fences as a strategic priority, and there were five goals that were identified as far as making amendments to this town code. So I have a question for staff. Do these proposed amendments meet the five goals that were identified per the study session at the direction of town council?
Just wanted a chance to read through them one more time. I believe that the draft ordinance would address each of those issues.
Okay, so we have met the direction of the town council. My thought is to forward this to the town council. Do we necessarily have to take a vote to approve or deny, or just give them our comments that maybe there could be some revisions as a part of it, or just take into consideration the comments made by the public? And I see people shaking their heads.
So you have many options. Typically, obviously, we like to have a vote, one way or the other, whether that's recommending denial, recommending approval, or recommending approval with modifications. There have been instances where the planning commission has moved forward without a recommendation. Obviously, the town council will get verbatim minutes and/or choose to watch the video proceedings of this meeting and the previous one on this item. I think, you know, getting back to some of the issues that have been raised, and yes, we have hillside guidelines, I think, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Weisman or any of the other folks who are passionate about this issue as it relates to hillsides, but because they are in guidelines, there are not any objective requirements to use. And so I think that was part of the basis, and again, I don't want to speak for Dr. Weisman or anyone who's passionate about this issue, but this helps put it into the code where the guidelines don't apply in numerous situations. If you don't have a development application coming through, there's no requirements. They don't have to come to town. Nothing is required of those folks. And so this was trying to set up that process. Definitely want to hear, and the council for sure will want to hear, whether or not you, you know, forward this with or without a recommendation, folks' concerns, folks' views on these issues, and then also even, I believe we heard at least one flatland issue as well. So that would be helpful, I think, for the council moving forward, again, whichever way you decide to proceed.
All right, thank you. And I have one more question, if I may, Chair Kane, and that would probably be for the town attorney. So we've heard public testimony that have stated that these amendments would restrict the use of their property, reasonable use of their property. Do you concur with that?
I don't know what the standards for that effect would be. Economic enjoyment is one of them. So I think we would have to research that. I don't know if CDD has an opinion on that.
Well, I would just offer, there, you know, as we provided, there are a number of jurisdictions that do restrict fencing. They have, maybe not as strict as this fencing ordinance, but they are restricting it. It is not restricting the use of that. It is, in some folks' minds, as you've heard tonight and others who probably aren't here, limits their security of using that or having their children use that or their pets. But we can definitely research that. If that's something, as it moves forward, then we will have the town attorney and the deputy town attorney look into that further.
Thank you. And for discussion purposes, that would be a concern of mine as we move forward.
Other comments.
Commissioner Genov.
Thank you. As written, we could probably agree that the recommended changes meet the criteria that the town council set forth, but I think we could also agree that modifications to what's being recommended could also satisfy the town council's criteria. I think we've heard enough tonight to compel me to think that the fixed 30-foot boundary around the perimeter of a house or a structure seems to be unreasonable, both for larger lots and smaller lots. Mine is a one-acre property, and 30 feet puts me directly at my property boundaries. That's not where you want my fencing to go, because that would eliminate the corridors that do exist. So it kind of cuts both ways negatively. So I would, I would support some of the changes, but in particular, that 30-foot perimeter around the house doesn't seem reasonable. I think we've heard testimony tonight, and I think Mr. Mullen's comments regarding woodside from the previous meeting indicated that considerations with regard to the property lines versus the boundaries of the house might make more sense. And that could be a range. I don't think we ever want hard, fast numbers. It could be 10 feet for a parcel this to this size, it could be 20 feet for a parcel that to that size. And so if you've got the 20 acres, maybe your setback from a property line is 100 feet. Just something that's, something that's reasonable tied to the properties, but also provides the wildlife corridors of movement that we're looking for. So that would be an issue for me sending this going forward. With regard to the, excuse me, one more point, with regard to the fees, I think that the $2,200 permit fee is terribly onerous. I think your concept, Mr. Paulson, of a fixed fee is going in a better direction, but pretty much nobody wants to agree to a, or time and materials, sorry. People are uncomfortable with time and materials, because you never know where that might wind up. It could be more than the $2,200. So it seems like there could be an initial compromise, that you do require a permit, and the permit might be for a two-hour minimum. One hour for a consultation from staff, plus one hour that involves letting the permit, and then another hour at the back end for an inspector to come in and say, "Yeah, all looks good." So you've got a two-hour cost to that permit, and if the inspector says, "Yeah, that's not going to work," and there's some negative thing, then you go into a different, a different time and materials, perhaps. So I think there's, I think there's good intent here, but the hard and fast numbers are a problem for me. And lastly, I was asking about this 30-foot number, and I see what has been described on page 43, that that's tied to the ornamental landscaping, but I think the false logic here is that we assume deer fencing is only desired for ornamental landscaping. There's a lot of reasons why you would want deer fencing around parts of your property, not just the ornamental landscaping. I would be in favor of, if not, be in favor of reconsidering whether item number four on page 43 makes sense as written, considering all the other uses of deer fence that might be appropriate for a property. So in summary, I think that the proposed changes don't take into consideration the many, many purposes of fencing. We've got boundary delineation, we've got privacy, we've got human trespass, we've got animal trespass to keep out, but we also want to provide corridors to allow free movement. So I think what we have is just too restrictive, as some of our testimonials have said, too restrictive with consideration of the animals and not giving enough consideration to the human use and enjoyment of property. And then lastly, I do think it's best if we disassociate the hillside and the flatland fence requirements. They're just two different animals, so.
Commissioner Birch.
Chair, may I direct a question more to my fellow commissioners for conversation?
Yes.
So I really, really like what you just said, Commissioner Janoff, so I would like to ask my fellow commissioners, as we're giving guidance then to staff, because we've all been advised by council to do this. In our packet, Mr. Mullen gave us an example of Portola Valley. Portola Valley breaks the zones down by size, less than one acre lot, one acre district, and two-plus acre districts. So I wanted to know if perhaps we looked at something more along this line, and rather than setting the 30 feet, we looked at it based on lots, and then we took what you gave us, sir, and looked at more of some, or, and/or looked at some type of designated setback from the property lines to ensure that there's a wildlife corridor, maybe some hybrid between them, I don't, I don't know, but I would just look to my fellow commissioners and see if you guys would feel that would be a more compromise to the people that own the property, so we're not limiting to this small, but we are still addressing what the council has asked us to do.
Comment. Commissioner Hanson.
So if I was going to go back and look at this, like, what could you, you know, agree with and move forward with? I, I agree with Commissioner Janoff's comments about the 30 feet. Starting from the top, you know, since, as Mr. Paulson pointed out, there is no way to have a checkpoint process with the town unless there's, you know, a full development proposal. And so, so having some language in the code and forcing some kind of permit and review, that's something I could agree with. I can definitely agree that the hillside is different than the flat areas, but the main issue is the idea of the wildlife corridors. And so I happen to agree that the better approach than having 30-foot this that applies to all properties, and 42 inches here and 60 inches here is to rather say that, similar maybe to Portola Valley, there's different, there might be different standards for one, less than an acre, acre, or two-plus acres is one way to go about it. But I did like what we heard in the public testimony that maybe instead to look at, you know, what is the minimum amount of wildlife corridor, and maybe it's tied to the size of the property, because, you know, on a one-acre property, I also have a one-acre property in the hillsides, and, you know, if I did the 30 feet, I would be putting a fence kind of in the middle of my backyard, and then there would be another 20 feet on top of it, and it goes up a hill, and it would just look awful. And, you know, maybe it would help the wildlife come through, but I mean, you have to have this reasonable standard thing to evaluate things by, and that's why I was saying you can't, and others have said you can't measure this against everything. So, but, but the best way to me to do it would be to go after it with a, you know, a minimum corridor that you need to have based on the side of the, size of the property, and there will still need to be exceptions, because people's properties are different, and they, or they have what they have already. But I think you could kind of strike some of this language with these specifics. I also wanted to comment on the notion of wildlife-friendly. I appreciate the attempt to define wildlife-friendly, but this is not a standard that any inspector could live by. All fences, gates, and hedges, if, or it says have to be wildlife-friendly, and then wildlife-friendly is defined elsewhere, saying that it's, any animal could jump over or climb through or go under. I mean, how is an inspector supposed to evaluate that? I mean, that's, that's just a completely subjective view. So I think, I think it should be obvious to most people that, that something that isn't wildlife-friendly, we have a picture in our hillside guidelines about what's wildlife-friendly or not. I don't think we need to define it in our town code. And as far as some of these other specifics about the spacing of fence posts and stuff, I think we're getting into details that we don't need to. If you force the issue of the permit, the review process could say this is reasonable or not, you know, based on the guidelines we have in the hillside standards. you know, based on the guidelines we have in the hillside standards. So that's my input.
Thank you. Further comment? If we had a motion, and I don't know that we need one, but if we did, I'd say by and large, the clarity provided in the revisions are, are necessary, with many exceptions. And I begin by saying that the thirty feet, that section landscaping in the hillside design guideline chooses thirty feet for a number of different landscaping provisions. But nowhere, I think nowhere, did we say that we needed to have a fence thirty feet out. Thirty feet was used a guideline for other considerations, but not the fence. And it just, clearly, it seems it will not work as a blanket provision. And there needs to be a provision for case-by-case. On many of these things, I'm in favor of giving wide discretion to the community development director or DRC, and where, where such a quasi-judicial process would fail, then bring it to the planning commission. But I would suspect not too many of those would fail if reasonable discretion was provided. So I'm concerned about the thirty feet. I don't think it works. The fees, when I think about repairing a fence or moving a fence or anybody wants to do anything they want with their house, what is it, 2333? Is, is kind of outrageous. The number 233 has been proposed, but you know, that could be as arbitrary as the 2333. I do like the time and materials provision, where the town is compensated for the expenses that they incur, as they do with many other fee structures. You know, one would hope that, that the reviews were expeditious, didn't take fifty-five visits to the site, and that the time and materials was, was managed to keep it to a reasonable minimum. I like anything that has to do with mandatory corridors. Setbacks are twenty feet. And, and so if we had two adjoining properties, we'd be looking at a forty-foot corridor. Many, many testimonies tonight provided clear awareness by the property owners of the deer trails. And maybe we could start to learn where those deer trails are. We know our riparian corridors. Did I say that right? Good. We know where they are, because they're pretty clear. We could, we could make an effort going forward as we, as we experience them to note that this is a, this is a trail used by the wildlife. Because I think that is terribly important, and it's the purpose of this exercise, is to protect that movement, protect those animals. For which reason, I would never support the chain-league fence, simply because they can't get through it. And that's the purpose of this exercise, is to define wildlife-friendly fences, and a chain-league is just not friendly. I think an abiding consideration should be the children. We have, I have no record evidence awareness of any child being injured or endangered, maybe barked and growled at, but God forbid, I don't know of any child being injured. That would have to be part of the CDT's, CDD's discretion. If there were infants involved, we might have a provision for that. And, and because that's just tantamount. There's nothing more important than protecting a child. So I'd, I'd underscore the concept of discretion. And I'd underscore the concept of if and when we find ourselves in a repetitious abuse situation, we can revisit the whole question. And I totally support disassociating the town fence policy with the hillside fence policy. And I support what's been said about taking a second look at the Portola Valley standards on how they define which project should be handled in which way. I'm not saying that's a motion. I'm not sure I said, "Oh, yeah, there's one other thing." On page two of six of the revision, down at the bottom, it's defining riparian corridor. Ripping corridor means an area compromised of habitat strongly influenced and delineated by the presence of perennial and intermittent streams. And for staff's benefit and council, I'd recommend taking out the word strongly. What's it going to be strongly for? If you've got a riparian corridor, you've got to take care of it. So those are my thoughts. If, if we could find a way out of this to say, "We've said what we said." The minutes will be a record of what we said. I don't know that we need a motion beyond what the five of us have said, because I think it's terribly comprehensive. Be clear that I'm supportive of this revision with those nine or ten items that I've mentioned and other commissioners have mentioned. Commissioner Birch.
On top of those items, can I ask my fellow commissioners about the comment of changing in the flatland, the six-foot to seven-foot fence? He's right. I think that's what everyone builds. And maybe rather than have a document that has everyone out of compliance, would there be any issue with us changing that? I'm asking the community development director.
There is no issue. He stated many facts. He's spoken at council. I have had a conversation. I believe Mr. Mullins had conversations with him as well. The town doesn't have a permit number for fence exceptions. Anecdotally, we know that not many people get fence exceptions, and as you drive around town, there are many fences that are over six feet in height. Current building code doesn't require a building permit for fences up to seven feet in height. However, our town code from the zoning perspective still has a six-foot limitation. So we could definitely modify that, whether it's modifying it to seven feet, whether that's six and a foot of lattice, or whether that's seven feet solid. Definitely be interested in input from the commission on their thoughts on that.
I've done some surveys, amateuristic, and I'd be inclined to support a six-foot fence with a one-foot lattice. And what I've done in my own home is motivated the vines to get up there. And I did this with the support of my neighbors. So I, I like the total seven, but the last foot be a lattice that's specific to that. Anyone else? Commissioner Hansen.
So I had, I had a question. I wanted to go back to this, this permitting thing. So I was making a supposition. If, if, if a person's going to build a pool and it includes a fence, does they require a permit for the pool and then also a separate permit for the fence?
No, we would roll that all into one, because the permit requirement for a fence for a pool is in the building code. So that's an automatic requirement.
So this permitting fee would essentially be for a standalone fence?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe we need to make that clear? I mean, just so that people don't, I, I don't know if we need to make it clear or not, but, but I, I wondered that as I was thinking through it. The other thing I wanted to ask was about, about front yard fences. It, it didn't appear to me that there was any delineation in the hillside guidelines or in the code as drafted that would say the height of the fence in the front versus the back. And I, I did notice in some of the other jurisdictions, they would have a lower height of the fence in the front, which made a lot of sense to me, you know, facing the street than you would have in other parts of the property. I mean, and so if your number is six feet, maybe in the, you know, in the front, unless there's a special circumstance, there may be some specific landscaping in front where they need to have something higher. But I, I wondered if that shouldn't be looked at as, you know, putting a different height limit in the front that was lower.
And, and in addition to that, I would support what I've read in the, in the staff report, that in particular corner lots have a special standard for the height of their fences, as can be used to help prevent accidents. I want to go back to what one of the speakers said about the fences. And I don't think it's a secret that there are many that are beyond what the permissible level is. And I'd like to reiterate what I think I heard the speaker say, that a law that's not enforced is not a law, it's an embarrassment. And we have a lot of apparent exceptions, so maybe this time the law should reach up and to where reality is. Other comments? Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Janoff.
Just would also support the six-foot-high solid fence with a one-foot lattice.
Say again, please.
On the non-hillside properties, I would support a six-foot-high solid fence with a one-foot lattice up to seven feet.
Good. Other comments? So I'm going to see if I can get out of this easy. I don't, I don't think a motion would serve any purpose. I think in general, the five of us are of a mind, in general, on, on most of what, what has been said, and that the minutes of, of this hearing, especially the last three pages, would be of great value to town council as opposed to a up or down vote or even a motion. How say you, Mr. Paulson?
I definitely will not require you to make a motion. So if you'd like to forward this with just the comments as stated this evening, then we can do that, and that doesn't have to be by a motion either.
How say you, commission?
I'm good with that. I can even make it into a motion, just to formalize it. So I will say that I moved a forward town code amendment, application A-17-002, to the town council for consideration of amendments to chapter 29, with consideration from comments from commissioners and the public, without giving an up or down.
That's excellent. Do I have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes five to zero. In this case, would there be any kind of an appeal right on the, on what the commission has done?
There are not any appeal rights. This is simply a recommendation to the town council, so there are not appeal rights.
All right. Then let's move on to a report from the community development director.
Very briefly, the last council meeting, they considered one community development item, which was for the house on Bella Vista. They ultimately approved that house, and then they did not get to the seller discussion, given the lengthy discussion on the cut-through-traffic topic.
In the approval of the property, were there any changes to the application?
There were not.
Thank you. Commissioners, any commission matters for us? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.